With liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. And as usual, we have a window of opportunity here for anybody that has something that's not on the agenda that they'd like to bring up. Now's the time to do that.
I'll do it real quick.
Okay.
We finished Monday with our plan for RDA. And we have submitted, it will be submitted to IEDC on 31st. So we're, there's no money, no pot to go with it, but we'll have a plan.
But we've got a plan.
We'll have a plan, and you all will be getting copy evidence since we get copied.
None of you. None is not the problem, we just gotta have a plan, right?
Appreciate your support.
Yeah, we appreciate what you do on there.
We're continuing to work on it.
Thank you. All right. If I can find my way through this stuff here tonight. First up, anybody else have anything? Marty?
No.
Okay. I'll take that as a definite. Highway department, without damage.
I gave you all, it's laying up there, there's an update on paving and stuff going on. Unless you have something for me, there's really no need to.
I'd like to tell you guys, did a good job today.
Thank you.
Reg was out there hitting the two, although I don't know who all helped us, if they were.
If nobody, if nobody that's seen with the wings on the paper, and what we're making one pool, that is making all the difference in the world on how these roads are running now. I really appreciate the guys working on that, getting that, getting it all, bugs worked out. And it just makes a better road, and it's working great, I think.
I'm just wondering why it's your district that's getting the new. Mine goes foot down the middle of the road.
Well.
There's two ways to look at that.
I only have to explain this, and it has to be in my district, right?
Why do you complain that when is my road gonna get paved, and now he's got the super speed?
Two ways I heard this week, look at that, if you're getting big, it either makes you look really good or really bad.
Yeah, and it, and it looked really good.
They did look good.
It looked good.
And that water road is.
Yeah, it helped them, helped them a lot.
You could really fly down there now.
But it, again, the guys are doing a good job, pass that on. So 10-7 will be on stagecoach to Blomington Trail, 10-14 Pleasant Bridge, to Kinder Hook, and 10, or 9-16 will be at Underwood Radio Tower. 8:22 County Line Road, AKA Pickle Patch.
That's what we call it.
Never heard that, never heard that.
Yeah.
All right.
I want to tell Kenny Rose that you live by a pickle patch.
Did, is all the other paving done, the contract paving, is it all done now?
Yeah, we're just Underwood.
Pardon me?
Underwood's the only one.
Only one, okay.
For the, for the community crossing area.
All right, and how many miles is here in the window?
Fifteen point six is the community crossing, and we'll probably get in thirteen, hopefully.
So.
And that is, that issue on Underwood Road been resolved?
Yes, and it looks really good.
So, close to.
Oh, and somebody stopped and donated a spreader box this week. And he pulled up, he had purchased, it was Harris. And he.
Steve?
Yeah. He had pulled up and bought a dump truck, and was wanting to sell the spreader box. And someone from the city police department walked out and was joking with him and said, "Sell it, why don't you just give it to him?" And he said, "Well, if you can get me in a tax paper, I'll give it to you." So I called Tammy, Tammy found out, and we got three spreader boxes.
For a tandem dump truck too, right? Was it for a tandem or second?
No, it's for.
It's single item, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, we're certainly thanking for that. It'll be good to use. All right. Nothing else on your part, you say?
No.
How about the Sheriff's Department?
Oh, we've got just a few things here, we'll be quick. We're going through this fast forward. First of all, I want to tell you a couple of thank yous before we get started. One of them is, I said, I'd be happy about this. Our health department, our nurse inside of the hospital, or inside of the jail, Doug and the staff have talked the state into paying for HIV meds from now. Thank you.
Thank Doug.
That's literally, to us, that's major, major, major. So, happy to hear about that. So, so you will, you will agree that time, I think. Then, thank you to Jill. We've been trading off work with each other. Letting her borrow prisoners, and she's been helping us with dump trucks and everything too, so we appreciate that.
We appreciate you guys.
We've got, you know, some dads working really, really well. Just a couple of thank yous before we get started.
Yeah.
All right. First of all, you said you've got the paperwork from Johnny Jones on the cars.
I did, I signed it, I signed that today for the three, purchase of the three vehicles for the SRO officer.
Okay, good.
That's been taken care of today.
And there is a resolution before you to adopt, West Banko requires a resolution for the purchase, for the agreement. So you've got it right there in front of you, and I've got the original over here, so you can still move.
Okay.
Excellent.
All right, again, this is a resolution for financing for equipment for use by Scott County Sheriff's Department. Scott County Bank requires this, and it's for the acquisition of three 2019 Ram 1500 two-cab four fours. And that's the ones that we signed the paperwork for today. For a term not to exceed three years, for the large equipment purchase in an amount of 125,000. Total loan capacity will be 250,000. So, again, we need this resolution, the bank does, because it is in our name, so. Do I have a motion to?
Is it the end of three years to go back, or?
Well, it's, it's gonna be the, we're gonna loan a lease. No, we buy them.
It's a lease.
Yeah, no, we're gonna, yeah, at least to buy, yeah.
So, so these three vehicles are for the, for the Sheriff's Department, be used on the road, or are they?
They're gonna be, we're gonna try to use them on the road first, but, you know, so we're gonna see what happens with the car situation. I'd like to have them on the road, because they're good vehicles, you see what I'm saying? Maybe it's better on the road, if we get somebody that's got a junk car, you know what I'm saying? It's assigned to school, and they do, I don't know, we're just gonna see what, what it calls for, you know what I'm saying? For operations, what works out best.
Then, I mean, the three, I know you, you talked about getting three vehicles for resource officers.
Yeah, that's it.
Are these what these are?
Yeah, that's what that is, yeah.
And I'll explain the extra line of credit, you see there, the finance for the three vehicles, roughly 125,000. But what they've done is they opened up this line, it was not, we would not be tapping into that extra that's there. It just makes it easier if we have a purchase in the near future, again, of a vehicle, that it would have to be approved by your board and then appropriated by council, so that it's not, it's not part wrong on that extra 125,000. It's just a line of credit they've extended.
So these are three leased vehicles, and at the end of the lease, we're gonna buy them for a dollar, or whatever they're worth?
And what they do.
Well, yeah, that's a good question there. I'm assuming that's, would be, it's able to, even have to do this on purchases. Yep, and this is saying that the loan is 125,000, and, yeah, and an additional 125,000 guidance line for future purchases.
It's like having a line.
Yeah, it's like having 125,000.
We don't pay any, we don't tell them how you pay your bills, we don't do it, you know?
No, I think, I think what that would be, would be in fact that if they wanted, you know, if they got approval from the council.
We're not borrowing money, we just got a line.
No, it's a line of credit, yes.
We're really borrowing 125,000. We're borrowing 125,000 if we didn't, you know, if that's how it is.
That you wouldn't have to do another resolution.
We're not.
If you, if you went back to the council, council.
The bank proposes to us, so this is something the bank proposes.
So the total loan capacity, 250,000, total loan is 125,000.
Right.
Yes.
And you couldn't do that on this line of credit, you couldn't purchase anything more unless you went to us?
I gotta get your license.
It says it right there.
That can't be touched.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And it says that here, Commissioner approval and council appropriation, in order to access the other 125,000.
Okay.
I'll, I'm in. All right, the motion is made for John to accept the resolution for the Scott County State Bank, here's a second.
Awesome.
I'll make a comment on this, we'll call that, sign that away. She gets a great one down there.
I'm on my way to talking, you guys, don't care what's going on, sorry, hurry up for you. Update on the body scan we purchased. We've just about got your rooms ready, the, the new booking room is just about ready, so Stanley is all we're waiting on. So, just as soon as Stanley comes and moves all of our stuff, our buckle position, we'll finish up tomorrow, then we can get that body scanned in place. We can get used to it today, because just today, we had a guy come in, and whenever he started booking in, he swallowed it up. So here we are, out at the hospital with him, you see what I'm saying? So, that was saying, just today is where they had it. So we're getting it in as quick as we can, because it's gonna help operations tremendously.
It looked to me like Josh has saved a lot of money off of it, too, some of that work you've done, that middle room, that's pretty amazing. I mean, used to, you couldn't even walk in that room and talk, it wasn't bad, now it's.
Yeah, it has, Josh has, and I tell you what, Tony's here too, I gotta thank Tony too, because we have worked on it, I have, I've worked on it too, but. Because Josh is over there every day, he's, he's working at our place every day, and Tony's coming over to help him. I know it's, you know what I'm saying, it's been a major problem, probably because of everything else that needs to be done, but. And I, John's had to be over there today, and I sort of, and ended it. Anything we can get, and I think Tony, I talked to Tony about this, we can get Josh or somebody at that jail full time because of the new jail facility, as a full time maintenance man, it's gonna save us money, so much money the long run. I have some pictures, I'll show you guys, on some maintenance issues that just happened, because, you know what I'm saying? It's just nobody's fault, it just happened because of this one, I don't care if you've been on it, so. Over the last, you know, 30 years or so, just think about it.
Early on, ten years ago.
It's just been over the last, you know what I'm saying, I know what you're saying, yeah. It's just, nobody says, it's nobody's fault, it's just, it's just daily, daily things, you know what I'm saying? That just needs to take place, so. So if you guys think about that, and Tim, what you thinking about getting that? You know what I'm saying, I appreciate everything they've done, because I'll tell you, they, they, they took me out tremendously. I'm telling you, the thousands, and John just said, the thousands of dollars they just saved us on this new booking room is that long, you know what I'm saying? It's so, and it got Tony's thumbs up, so. All right, we'll move off that, but everything's going as planned also. One thing we're gonna do is, is Stanley's gonna charge us a little bit more than what we appropriated, but we've got the money, because the council appropriated me more money, so I just kind of go back and explain to them. Okay. That works, we'll switch it over, so we've got the money paid for that, we need that money.
Oh, yeah, hold on a second. What, what are we, what are we doing with the booking room? I didn't, I didn't know anything about it, it was first job, or anything that you were doing.
Yeah, yeah, we talked about it, because the body scanner, the body scanner is where the old booking is, the booking area. So we had to get the new booking room, that's the new booking room, that's what we're offering now. It's the same thing, maybe described different before. What it is, is the booking area will be where the locker area is, and the old booking now is where the booking is.
You did, you made some wrong there, but you couldn't even do court through there, through your.
No.
Being equipped with so much background knowledge.
Yeah. It's really amazing what they've done, and then I showed John too, the new court, video court, we've got a video courtroom actually, we put them in. And they can have privacy, they can talk to attorneys, they can talk to the judges, they can talk to anybody. When we're doing probation, the probation office comes in and does their study, when they release them. Everything's being done on camera, it's been done in that room, and Josh and Tony guys, they did that too. That's saving thousands of dollars, because we don't have to physically bring people over, you know what I'm saying, to have that done, it's been done on there, so.
Is that the old, and that's, was that the old visitation rooms, is that where that's?
No, it's actually, it's mock closet. Yeah, mock closet, yeah.
I know, but it's in that vicinity.
Yes, it's in that vicinity, right, right.
I know.
You didn't need much room, you didn't have to set them down, but.
For the camera.
And you can observe them.
Yeah, we got cameras, we watch them, everything. We shut the door, and we shut the door, they're locked in, they can't get out, so. It's really, really pretty neat what they've done. So, another, another heads up to Tony and the guys. So that's the thing on the body scanner, if you have more questions on that, it's answered at 45,000, 45,000. Another thing I want to talk about is, is, and I've got a piece of paper here. What we've done is, is I canceled the contract with Stellar Commissary, and we'll endure our own commissary. The vast majority of our own commissaries will come from us doing it. And CPC is gonna provide the products like clothes, shoes, stuff that, you know, that's, you don't really deal with much that they will need. So, on that contract, they already got our telecommunications contract they had. So, what I sent that is, is just your approval, you see what I'm saying? That CPC does our computer work stuff, because what we do is, we order things, they allowed us to use their software to be able to put our commissary products on there. So they're doing all that stuff for us, and we're the ones that's getting the profit off of the commissary. And because of that, we're able to give the inmates better prices.
And you're getting all the profit, right?
Yes.
They don't get anything.
They don't get anything, of what we sell, yeah. If they want to add something additional we don't sell, then they do.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's, it's actually, we think it's gonna be a very, very, very good deal for us. Any also in, because we can offer a lot more products too, that, that Stanley.
How long, how long, correct?
Uh, it's on there, it's usually.
Usually a four year.
I think this is a three to five, that's where it is. So, but it's on there, you can read that, so, and there's a back page there for you.
Sorry, why can't I do, to make the replies there?
Oh, yeah, that's fine, we can, we can make a copy once we get to your agenda.
If you'd like to see our, we should say.
Stellar had our commissary, and they provided everything, everything that they did.
So this combined top of communications, they'll do all the, the IP part, part of, right?
Yeah. They're everything.
Everything.
We're one stop now, we had Stellar for commissary, CPC for phones and different things. Now CPC has all the commissary phones, there's things called a chirper, and some other things that we've got going on in there. It's one person, and one bill, and one, it's gonna send five things actually to us, plus about a lot better deals.
I think you mentioned the way for, with the phone. There's no, no, they have a certain time and place, they can call. They can communicate with the families, which keeps pressure down.
Yeah.
And you can, can you also observe what we can say?
Absolutely, yeah. And what a new feature they've got, is that say that somebody's got a grandmother that lives in Nevada, they can get online and actually talk to their inmate person that's in the jail. We monitor their conversation also, they can do that. So, it's actually a pretty good deal. We're pleased with the, what they told us CPC is gonna do for us. Matter of fact, even the products that CPC is gonna sell, that we're not gonna sell on the commissary, they told us for the first year, that they would give us 100% of the profit, and I think they'll take that. So, working out really well.
What's, what's that for them?
Uh, the, they're making all the money on the phone stuff, and the visual stuff, that's what they, that's what they specialize in, so.
So they're the company that has the boxes and the, and the phone system?
Yeah.
And the commissary part was just using their equipment to buy the commissary?
Yeah, and they allow us on those boxes, like I talked about, everything's done electronically now. If somebody wants to order commissary, they put a box on the wall, and they go up to it, and that's how they order it. So CPC is putting in their boxes, we put our products on their boxes, everything they do, it comes to us, we've got control over it. So really, it's pretty neat.
So where's, where's the product coming from?
Uh, we're buying, that rolls into the next one, I'm glad you asked that question. Uh, the next thing on the agenda actually is, we're gonna get a Sam's card, so we can buy product from Walmart, Sam's Club, and bulk, and cheap prices. So I want to get your guys' approval, you know what I'm saying, for, to be able to have one of those for our inmate trust account. I, I sent you later, I'm, I try to be open with you, you know what I'm saying, everything, I don't, I don't do anything, I may worry with the details, you see what I'm saying? But I want you to know what's going on.
Who's gonna turn the card?
Uh, it will be Patty.
Patty Collins.
Be the oversight.
And you'll keep, you're like, I trust you, you know, press and verify.
And Doug will approve all the purchases.
We don't, we actually set up plans?
No, we're, we're, we're types of example, right, yeah.
Okay. That's also including, I sent a card with Walmart and Sam's Club also. It's gonna be a debit card to West Banko, because that's where we want to have our accounts. So we'll have a debit card to use, just to try and use checks and.
Well, it allows us to, whenever JC's having a sale on product, you know, you can't go through the other means and make use of that. And so a debit card on that inmate trust account. Again, it will be limited to two cards, it'll be Doug and Patty, and we'll oversight it.
I was gonna say, is that?
It's just a debit, not a credit, so it'd be on that withdrawal.
I mean, will that be controlled by you, or will Sam's not allow anybody on you to?
It'll, well, just like any Sam's card, or any card you get, you can qualify who can use it, who can't.
And they all know a one go.
Yeah, they'll have to have an ID with that, that's where you split the limits on it.
When I use my Sam's card, they don't want to consider who I am, so, I don't know if that.
I typically have to use the license, and I haven't gone in for years. Well, at this point, you're very limited on who fits to.
I understand that.
And we actually, today, State Board of Accounts actually came over, and we submitted a plan to them of how we was gonna do everything. Can get it, and all the oversight, and how we was gonna use the cards and that stuff, and they, we got a plan to be able to do that through them, to make sure.
So for my notes, are we asking for two cards, one for a Sam's account, and then one for a debit card or a checking, is that correct?
Yeah, out of the inmate trust, for that, for the debit.
And just work this out, as far as for the debit card, just to have, to put for State Board, again, to show that, that they're aware of it.
Yeah, they're through who?
Through West Banko, through the inmate trust account. There's just going to be the two cards, and they'll be monitored. It's just to make the ease of being able to make the purchases for the store.
And you can do online purchases.
Right.
Yeah. And again, we've got State Board of Accounts gave us how they wanted us to do it, so we've got the oversight there, that's all, so.
I don't, you don't even need a motion on that, dude.
We're just like, I want to get a process.
On the card, you do, yeah.
Sure.
Is that worded?
Yeah.
You want to do one to one, or both of them?
If you don't want to say, like, that way I can list them, because these are two different, to me, it's two different issues.
Do we need written something for Sam's?
Okay.
So what you're asking for is a Sam's card to buy commissary supplies, to run the commissary through the jail, through the Sheriff's Department?
And the debt, that's the first one, is that one of your first?
No, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, yeah, it is, and the second card will be a debit card, so we can purchase items, like Tim said, online, and, yeah.
I guess the only concern I have, I mean, I don't, I mean, if, if you can purchase items for the commissary at a cheaper rate, or, or buy, or, I guess, the commerce, commissary should be set up to where, wherever the inmates, you know, it's like anything else, supply and demand, whatever they're wanting, most of it, what's the product you'll be buying? The issue, or the thing you'd need to look at, and maybe you're, you're able to buy at a cheaper bulk rate than, than your supplier now. I don't know if you can, or you can't, I mean. So you're saying that Sam's, Sam's products are cheaper than something you're buying retail, or they're?
Because we're having to pay in mailman, because we're, see, we're paying, like Stellar, when they purchase it, and then we have to pay Stellar, so we're eliminating the mailman, so. So it's cheaper, yeah.
Well, as long as there's a savings, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, I mean, like I said, Doug, and you, you obviously know what products they're, they're wanting to purchase, so.
Patty and Doug, you did a lot of research into it, and, I mean, of course, at the beginning, it'll probably be a little trial and error, you know, they'll know right off what the hot sellers are, and that's what's gonna make this easier, because then if they're on sale somewhere, you know, they'll just run out and get it here.
Well, I mean, I've, I've bought retail for, and I know that buying retail is different than buying even through Sam's. I mean, so, and that's why I question, is the rate gonna be, are we getting a better rate through Sam's? Are we getting a better rate through a vendor?
Yeah, no, it's, it's actually through Sam's. And I would like, if we took about, like, the store, grocery store suppliers, you know, we even contacted some of them, what has, like, the ops and all that, and they don't really want to deal with nobody except the stores, they didn't, things like, you know, different than certain cases.
And that don't mean you've got to buy from Sam's.
No.
No, it's not.
You find some little good deal somewhere, you go down and write a check on it.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah. Once again, it's a pleasure. Do I hear a motion to allow, first of this, do the Sam's card first, or allow, show it to the department to obtain a Sam's card, which would be on at Walmart too, I think one card goes along with that.
Well, yeah, well, the card, I'm sorry, the card that gets you the same.
Yeah.
This is a red.
And we can purchase, we can purchase with a Sam's card. Does that allow you to purchase at Walmart too?
Yes.
Okay.
Which Walmart, I don't know, I have it at Walmart, but the Sam's Club card, so. Do I hear a motion to allow for a Sam's Club card from the Sheriff's Department for the purpose of purchasing commissary products?
Yeah, I'm in for that motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I might get you an analysis. And the second on the agenda is the West Banko debit card, to allow them to use it to purchase out of that account. It will be on the account of the commissary, correct? And that way they can send who, to whoever to authorize you to go down and, and make the purchases. And it's, again, a debit card, not a credit card, and so it will become directly out of the account.
Yes, I have a question on that. Any one time, how much money is in that account?
That is not what I have anything to do with, other than going to be doing oversight on it, as far as the in and out of the installation. It usually has several thousand in it, because the commissary.
I mean, 20,000, 30,000, 50,000?
I really don't know, I think it depends on what time of the month it is, because she's paying the commissary fees for the products out of that. And so, you know, it varies up and down, you know, depending on, an order comes in, and she owes the bill. That's strictly Patty's area of expertise. I just know that, you know, it's always got some money in it, because then at the end of the month is when she cuts a profit check, and she's out, so. You know, and that's when I put that in. And last month's commissary profit is 21,000. There's always at least, you know, 20 or 30, I really don't know.
That's what we build it up to.
And I, I guess, assuming, assuming this, that you submitting this to State Board of Accounts, they're probably, I think State Board of Accounts is probably gonna require a checks and balances, as far as, there's gonna have to be one, and one person sign off on this, saying that this was, this was. And if, you know, the officials, what this was used for, this was the amount, and at that part, uh.
We actually met them this morning to establish it, we, we gave them an outline of what, how we were gonna do, and they gave us the lesson.
Yeah, well, what I was saying was that, I mean, if one person goes down with a card and buys something from Sam's, there's not the second person there to verify it.
Well, they will, they have to bring it back and inventory it in.
That's where I'm going with, where's the process?
There's another separate person who's going to be inventorying, and that person also puts together the orders, and then, again, it's gonna be verified by the top end. I, like I say, this isn't mine.
It's, it's intercheck balances, they buy about 10 boxes.
You'll look at it, okay?
Yeah, if, if they have, whenever they go down and buy it, and I know what you're saying, it's like somebody say, "Well, I'll buy 13 boxes, I'll take 10 back, I'll put three in the turntable," and I get that, but yeah.
I had managers walk out of UPS with 13 computers, and walk right through security, so, I mean.
Yeah, they'll check it in, they'll check.
There's an inventory, we'll have an inventory, with that receipt comes back, it'll say there's 13 boxes, they'll book in 13 boxes, and when it goes out, there'll be an inventory check.
But the other thing, the other thing is, is can we put a limit on how much a one-time purchase they can use the card for, so that?
I don't know what the limit is, for Sam's, I don't know.
I think there already is one, 2,500, 2,500.
I don't know.
Just one of them.
Because I'm not.
Is that a whole?
Sorry, we should have brought that.
No, I mean, I'm just asking, because I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not accusing anybody of anything, I'm just saying, there's a, should be some safeguards of.
There, they do have that, I mean, either the sheriff or Doug is going to approve the requisitions of.
But ever, but at the end of the month, we all, we all work it on.
Right, right. We're going to look at inventory, and see that it matches purchases. And you pay on the walking house, that's dirty.
Well, I mean, again, as long as we're doing a, doing a balance at the end of the month, we know, are we square, are we not? So if I'm not square, then we got a problem, if I'm square, we go on, so.
If it's not square, we investigation.
That's on credit there, yours is.
And this is a debit, so they're, they're checking in account, they're better out, so it's going to be hard to make their purchase amount on their credit, on their debit card, because whatever's in your account, that makes them allowed to go through. But on the Sam's, you guys can establish.
On the debit card, you can, you can safeguard, I, I, at one time, we had a six hundred dollar limit on ours where any purchase of our six hundred dollars, it flagged it. And, and so you would sometimes have to call the bank and say, come on, I'm using my card, I need to do more than that and they'll, they'll leave, you know, change it, but, but there are limits that you can, on a debit.
I can tell you right now, it's twenty-five hundred dollar limit because what happened is we went down on cabinets for the new booking room and it was over that and they couldn't.
Yeah, to do it a lot of.
Yeah.
Okay, so the bank has an equivalent of twenty-five hundred.
I would.
They, it's their security limit.
I'm all right.
They said if we needed more than that, then we would call, like he said, they'd call, like, and they let, know we're going to be spending more than that to go in and let it go through.
And you'll know when you go along.
Yeah, and I can find out and let you know, tell me to at the next meeting, I'll tell you exactly what it is.
Okay, I know, I just want to know if there is one, so I don't care what it is, so I just, I just want, if you're going to reconcile at the end of the month and make sure that it's not, hey, at the end of the year, we're going to do this and.
And then softwareness, it will be entered in and then it's going to show things taken out and then when they do their inventory each week or whatever they set up. They'll know, hey, we're supposed to have five Twinkies, we've got five Twinkies, you know, type thing.
Any of those still are twinkers?
Hey, those don't ever go bad, right?
They say.
But they're putting several oversight measures in and then Patty and I are, will be checking each other's reconciliments along with the sheriff, you know, or superior. And signing off.
And I, I just, you make the motion?
I don't make the main one.
You got one yet? Not on the, on the debit card.
Is it just simple, we did a motion?
I am, I am entertaining a motion for a debit card.
Do you want to make the motion with a limit or without a limit?
I haven't wanted to set it up yet, so.
I think if it's, if it's, if you put it up short, it's twenty-five hundred.
Well, I don't know if it's going to be that with the new, you know, the new, when we get the card, you see what I'm saying?
Jerry, her limit's five thousand, if it gets to that point, you'll come back and let us know. Are you okay with it?
I'm, yeah, I'm, I think, I think it's all upon all his responsibility and their responsibility to, to monitor this and make sure this, and again, you know, State Department of Accounts, I'm sure, you know, I'm sure they don't want checks and balances in place. You're going to want checks and balances in place and I, yeah, I'm okay with.
The software is the same as what Stella had and it will run reports, so there again, you know, you'll have the reports to look at, so you've got the documentation.
So, so if everybody is okay with that and you want to make them to form a motion with a five thousand dollar cap, that's fine, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, because like I said, if we have to, then we can call down, like I said, I can call down, so I guess we need you to approve a little bit more tomorrow, so we'll be doing this much.
Whatever you just said, that's my motion. Give them the debit card with five thousand dollar cap.
John makes the motion to allow the sheriff to obtain a debit card through West Bank old on the commissary bond. With a limit of five thousand, this is dollars set on it to purchase to Walmart, it, well, not on Walmart, but J C, for a commissary product, how's that?
Commissary.
Is that what you said?
Commissary.
I thought.
And I yield, I'm going to really yield, I get approval from the counseling board, that's what I've been doing, if I use anything out of the commissary besides what it says in the law, I get approval from them before I do anything, so.
Okay.
Last thing that I had, unless you guys had anything, is, is our mental health services inside the jail. I told you last time that Life Springs said they was not going to perform no more force evaluations for suicidal prisoners and also prisoners that may have some, you know, mental issues. I did look into that, I had Teresa contact Life Springs because there was some controversy whether or not because they had a tax abatement, if they was supposed to provide those services, because they're supposed to provide. Mental health services for the county because of tax payment, it does not fall underneath that, so.
We have a contract with them, all right?
Right now, we have Life Springs coming in, the county does, but it don't cover the jail, that's what I was saying, that's what Teresa looked into.
You should cover a bid, didn't it?
You're right.
Well, I doubt they might have just told you to have a contract with them.
Okay, right now, we've got a grant where Life Springs comes in and they spend eight hours a week, Shanita does and does some stuff for us, but she's not allowed to do the evaluations. All she can do is, is do addiction counseling and those types of counsellings. So what I did was I gave you a proposal that Life Springs gave us and then also we asked Centerstone to come in, to give a bid, they had not returned the bid, so they didn't, you know what I'm saying, I guess they're on their own. And then Dr. Cook contacted me, his nurses did yesterday, was that yesterday before, I can't remember. Monday, they came down and Dr. Cook is going to come on, he's got onto your agenda for the next commissioner's meeting, actually, and he's going to present a proposal to y'all to take over medical and psychological services inside the jail. So he's going to, you know what I'm saying, he'll be here next meeting, he was going to get on the jail, I don't know if he's called you yet, taken him on, his nurses, okay.
So what, I don't understand what Dr. Cook's, what, what exactly is he talking about proposing?
Well, he, what he proposed, just, you know what I'm saying, off the record, I don't know anything official what he said, but he basically wanted to come in and he said he would take over all of the medical issues at the jail, he would be the, instead of advanced medical doing anything, Dr. Cook's office would be the medical for the.
You're saying he would be like Dr. Crossdale used to, basically, he would run off of the deal?
Yeah, he would be the doctor in jail, he would come in, he would send his nurses down and do exactly what we have in there now with advanced medical supposedly. So he's going to submit that proposal to you, and part of that was, is they said that he had just hired a mental health expert and that maybe he's going to come down and put that in as part of the proposal, so he was explaining, their nurses, his nurses were explaining to him, I told them, I need to kind of let you guys know what it was.
So in the past, when Dr. Crossdale did that, did we pay him to do that? So what's, why, who's doing it now?
Advanced medical, yeah.
So what are they charging?
Oh, it's about eighty-seven thousand a year, I think.
I know, it's way, it's more than that. The doctor buys, it's fourteen thousand.
So we have a contract with them?
Yes, we do, it's over fourteen thousand, advanced correctional. But what they provide is a nurse, forty hours a week.
Is that the nurses there now? Yeah, the days.
And then it also provides a doctor once a week and each HIV person comes in once a month, I believe. And also, any medical claim where we have to send someone outside to Scott Memorial or wherever, we get the bill and they reprice it to Medicaid pricing, which has saved us tremendously. And, you know, because they know all the codes and I send them to, I email those to them and they reprice, send them back and that's what we pay.
Let me ask this question, so what I'm understanding is, what I'm understanding is you're pretty happy with the services, what they've done? That was why I probably entertained changing it, was if you're happy with.
The contract's running out, so the medical contract is on.
Are they, are they willing to renew or?
It's an annual renewal.
So I'm, I'm sorry.
The other thing, though, is we have a contract with the state for HIV, the HIV problem and they provide roughly forty-four thousand, forty-three thousand, they reimburse us to help pay for the, for Denise. And also disposable medical supplies.
So the state, you're saying?
Offsets the cost of it.
So they offset the advanced correctional budget off of that?
They pay directly to the auditor.
Speaking of that, how many people in the jail are, that were incarcerated right now with, or HIV positive?
I can't tell you the exact number, but there's somewhere between ten and fourteen of them, that's what that's.
And there are treatment?
Some of them are, we try to get them on like treatment, we can't make them take the treatment if they don't want to.
I'm like with Bob, if you're happy with the, and I know maybe Dr. Cook just showed up and said, I'm going to, I'm going to present something and whether you like it, you know, maybe it's with me, I don't know, but.
I've never heard a wrong word against Denise ever.
I've, I've met her a few times and it's very nice, like.
One contract.
It's usually renewable in April.
Yeah, it's coming up here this year, coming up next year.
So really nothing, just proposal.
Yeah.
So the other part of this, and I know I've been part of it a little bit or, or helped transport people before, but how often does an inmate cry foul that I need to go to the hospital? How many times is a doctor actually, because I'm remembering, they would, you guys would call the doctor on duty or a doctor and he'd say, send him or no, put him back in, you know, he's fine. Or he can bid whatever, how often does that happen with this outside organization that has a doctor, which I don't know where this doctor's coming from, but.
Comes our regular places too, that's almost a week.
Is he coming from Chicago, is he coming from here?
I believe he's at Aryan, you know.
So, but I mean, how often does he, does he send them, you know, I mean, does he, does he ever tell you that?
Yeah, well, yeah, he's told us no, some, a couple of times, they don't need to go, yeah, absolutely. And there's a protocol that's had, and that's part of the advanced medical team, if whatever illness it is, they've actually got protocols for every single one of those and they, they follow the steps and then the doctor, you know, they.
I don't know how many times, you know, they just want to get out and they.
And another thing that they do too is, is advanced medical is, if something happens in the jail, gets sued or something up with the medical, advanced medical, they have their attorneys work with us and, and while anything goes on, they've got.
It's a suit too, doesn't it? I'm curious. So how often has that happened? I mean, because I know we've had a few instances over there we've been sued and.
We have our own insurance, but is there, does it hit their insurance first or ours?
No, us. But they have probably helped us, I'm guessing here, I can, I can.
Low eighties, low humidity Saturday.
Five, six, seven times, eight times. But that's what's happened a lot.
Question for you, men, this is, we're talking hundred thousand or whatever, more, yeah, or more.
I think it's a hundred and thirty-five.
Is that too over? I mean, I'm just, what I'm asking is, is this not a bidding process?
We call that much money as well, we call it, we're not bidding for certain amount.
It's a service, it's not, it's not a product.
Okay.
And, and, and I think, basically what I'm understanding, we'll go back to the original here, is that Life Spring is not doing everything and we need.
If they don't get it.
And this is their proposal, what they could do, it's going to be, add the extra cost. Those costs range from fifty dollars per hour of clinical service, eight to twelve hours per week, twenty-five dollars per hour of benefits, or sixty dollars per month. So this would cover your evaluation.
Yeah, that would, that's suicide of people's worth.
So, so on average, I mean, how many, I guess, that'd be the only time they could be using that, that, this portion.
Well, that's part of the advanced medical. It's impossible to give you an average, it could be one this time, could be thirty next. Here's what, and this is part of that advanced medical, because if someone is suicidal, then they go through that with Denise and then Denise will make the recognition that they need to be evaluated, mentally evaluated and that's when they, you see what I'm saying, going through Life Springs.
So I guess what you need now is, is to accept this, or Life Spring, or look for somebody else.
Right, and, and also what I was telling was, is that Dr. Cook is wanting to make a proposal, his nurses told him that, so that's all three, I was telling you that, now, ask him to act on it, if you want to, you can, but you know what I'm saying?
But that's two different issues altogether.
No, because he's going to be providing the mental health also, so if, yeah, I know it's confusing, okay, yeah, it is, but he's going, he said he, they just, the nurses told me that he just hired a full-time mental health expert of some type. And that they're wanting, they're going to try to make a bid to get on mental health services.
What this does to begin?
With who?
Dr. Cook.
It don't have anything, that's just one, their proposal, Dr. Cook's going to give you a proposal on why you should use him instead of Life Springs.
Dr. Cook, Dr. Cook's talking about doing the same thing, plus what advanced correctional's doing now, he's, he's wanting the whole contract and he's going to do the mental health plus automatically going to be the, the jail doctor, that's his proposal, but he hasn't proposed it yet.
Here's, here's my thought, my thought is, is if this is not, if we've got a contract with, with the other people, with advanced, at that point, I'm thinking you just, it will need to add this and, and look at, and I, I mean, at that point, I.
I'm admitting, but we've got to do the Life Springs or that equivalent now because it's not included in that, because see, Life Springs.
And that's what I'm saying, if we add, if we, if we add the Life Springs right now, you've already got to, everything is, and then at that point, you got to able to start.
What confused the whole thing was, is that Dr. Cook wants to come in and provide post-service.
And that's fine, and that's fine, that's okay.
The other part of this is, what are we doing now?
Uh, we are using Life Springs right now.
But they're quitting it, right?
They're quitting, yeah, they actually did a couple of force this past month and.
So I guess my question is, if a person cries at the jail and says, I, I feel like I'm suicidal, we're not a medical facility, so why would you not transport them to Scott Memorial and let Scott Memorial handle them at that point?
But we didn't, but that's the nurse's decision, advanced medical, they go through and they determine whether or not the person is truly, and if they are, then we have to send them there to get cleared and then go to Life Springs.
Well, if, if, if you, if your officer's sitting on a, on a scene and the guy says, I think I'm going to kill myself, do you what, you just leave the scene and leave him there?
No, we, we actually take.
He goes one or the other, doesn't he, he goes to jail or he goes to the hospital?
To the hospital.
So what's the difference with the, a jailer saying, this guy just said he's going to kill himself? Right then, he, you know, you heard it come out of his mouth, because I've, I've been on many, many of the scenes where they said, did you say this, and I've seen him say, change your mind, but if you said it, you're going one place or the other. So I don't know why all of a sudden we need a program when if, if someone states that, they're going, they're going to the hospital.
Well, because Life Springs was doing it for us before as part of the, you know what I'm saying, that deal that they had with the county, but now they're stopped, they're not doing it anymore, that's what we did exactly, if the jailer heard that, then they would go through Denise, Denise would say, yeah, they've got to go, because that's our medical, Denise, you see what I'm saying? She said, yeah, they need to be evaluated, so then we would take them, have them cleared at the hospital and then ship them to the hospital.
So is Denise going to be the medical? So what's changed? Is she still the nurse that's, the nurse on duty, she has, she has a duty as a nurse to say, he needs to be transported?
Right, the difference is this, the difference is this, Life Springs was paying for that before, we had a deal with Life Springs, they were doing that, except whenever we sent them to the hospital.
But she's a medical provider.
Well.
She is a medical.
But Life Springs won't accept them unless they get cleared.
I'm not talking about Life Springs, it's one time.
I'm talking about, they go from the jail to the hospital and then a doctor sits there and tells them, do you, you know, did you try to hurt yourself? And then, then the doctor will send them to Life Springs.
They can, I think, I don't know.
The difference I have, don't get me wrong here, is if you got Life Springs, you don't have to take them to the hospital.
Right, they'll come to the.
They'll come to your jail, you don't have a security issue.
They'll do it right there.
And probably cheaper than going to the emergency room.
Yeah, and then, of course, those EDOs are determined by the judge too, when there's an emergency potential, so that's what, that's where the judge tells them.
Different thing, yeah. So this just keeps, and even, even with this, there's probably going to be occasions where you have to run some way up.
So why, why all of a sudden did the Life Springs decide they're going to stop?
We don't know, they started it in, I think, January, February, they told us they was going down, not doing it anymore, they've been doing it, I guess what happened was, is the only explanation we can get is that their providers, Shanita was doing it and they didn't know she was doing it. And then they found out that she was doing it and they said, don't do that, that's the only thing we get, so.
For going backwards, I mean, before your time, Shanita used to be in a lot more time a week and they cut her hours back.
Yeah, they don't have a thing to, they don't, they don't have a thing to it, they said that she was not supposed to be providing those evaluation services and she was doing it anyway.
Yeah, well, without a Life Spring, Connor, you don't have a choice. Yeah, without a Life Spring contract, you don't have a choice.
Right, absolutely.
You think, you know, like you, like you said a while ago, they say, they can't take you back. You gotta have somebody go out there and sit with them, maybe for two or three days.
And what the issue we found out is, is that the medical doctors will say, well, I'm a medical doctor, not a, you know what I'm saying, a psychological doctor, so then they'll, they'll set those up, and of course, then you have to go down there, and if the judge don't order it, you know what I'm saying?
Not to mention, they may send you somewhere besides Life Springs.
Yeah, they send you somewhere.
Where they want.
We have to go, because we just can't say, okay, you're done, you know what I'm saying?
And most of these places don't have their own security anymore, or do they? Some do.
Some do, some don't. They're getting out of the security business because of, you know what I'm saying?
So you gotta go have, unless the judge.
Or, yes, yeah.
But I, I, I'm a little, only concern I got is, this is, we don't have any, I mean, we're just like, drop this on us, we don't have really time to resort with this.
I'm, I'm actually, I prefer not to vote on it tonight, because I'd like to look at it and ask the questions.
And here's, here's a question I had, to be honest with you, that's, one of the things I said was, is, well, they were providing this service, Life Springs was, and then because they've got, they're the county health provider, they get a tax to pay for it, correct?
We get a tax for distribution.
Distribution, okay.
We pay, we pay through our general, and a part of our collection is state mandated, that has to be distributed to.
Every county does.
Every county.
Every county, so. My question was, is that, why doesn't that include the jail, but it don't? I found out that it does not. So that was my question, and I, I don't, you know what I'm saying, the next time that they even do that, if it can be that they would have to.
No, no, it's a statutory problem. We could, if we do some light legislation.
Yeah.
They could really change.
Do you know anybody?
Yeah, we're too.
So I guess, my question now, my question now is, is just, they have quit cold turkey, so to speak?
Yeah.
Or, so for the next couple of weeks, until we meet again, at that point, calling to the hospital, the emergency room, everyone, correct?
Invite the, the nurse, we're using the nurse on it, you know what I'm saying, you know, we're using the protocol. We got protocols for every single thing, you know what I'm saying, including that. That protocol's followed, that protocol says they can go to the emergency room, they go to the emergency room. At that point, the doctor says they can go to Life Springs, Centerstone, or Van Nuys, California, wherever, you know, so we have to go with them. So, and we've been lucky, you know what I'm saying, so far.
So, so with this, uh, if we agree upon this deal here, I don't like what you're saying, but if you agree upon this here, uh, what is the termination on our end? They terminated us cold turkey, looks like. Can we terminate them cold turkey?
Well, the contract, wherever the contract says, you know what I'm saying?
I mean, it, it looks to me like, if they can drop out at the drop of a half, then we should be able to also, uh, which may or may not, uh, hopefully, we won't even need them. Yeah, that's, that's what we hope for. But you've got two weeks' window here before we get back together, that just as you said, you, you know, your medical staff over there says, yeah, they need to go over the evaluation, we may decide to send them, I don't know. I get dank locally, but, but in a long story, they can send them anywhere, and you gotta send somebody to stay with them as long as they're back, correct?
As they had less the judge, we don't worry, we'd be on the way, we wouldn't have to. And if it's, you know, less, pay the families or something like that, you know, of course, that's up to the judge totally, but.
I'm gonna agree with Mike on this one. I want to wait a couple of weeks.
Since here you can terminate, you can terminate within sixty days.
Well, I guess, because this is a trust of verification to me, and probably the best way to go, but it's, it's a lot, it's a lay on us, kind of fifteen minute discussion. And I would just like to look at it more and see what our options are, if there is any.
Well, that, that's why I brought it to you, look at, so what you thought, so what you think that you wanna do, and digest it.
I'm all for looking at it next meeting.
Okay.
So, yeah. Hope you do that.
And then the next meeting too, is when Dr. Cook will be here. I'm not trying to, again, you know, sometimes I'm the.
Well, and you're probably gonna be giving a presentation, but we don't have to hold on him or do anything else if you want.
Yeah. That's good.
I mean, I'd like to, I really would like to vote on it now, but I just, it's kind of a minor involved, yeah, absolutely.
Well, and, and that was the point I was trying to make, well, I think there's a ton of money that could be involved without voting on it. Uh, I think there's a ton of money in two weeks that could cost you. We hope not, but again, if you can get out within sixty days, that's, you know, again, once, I mean, I almost believe that. My thought is, is I almost believe that you pick this up and, and run with it based on the fact that you won't have nobody, uh, and you can have somebody in place, and again, we can get out, uh, it might, I didn't see that, thanks for pointing that out. But either party here and too may terminate the contract upon a written sixty day notice, and I think, and again, the contract's in place until April with the medical side that was over there, so again, I, I think we would be covered one hundred percent.
When do they tell you they've been on the other one?
Uh, they started talking about it back around February or March, and then we've been able to keep them, you know what I'm saying?
So, but you don't have them now?
Well, we don't. We don't, but they are, actually Shanita's helping us out. Shanita's doing a lot of stuff, and again, if they found out she was doing, she would probably.
I guess my next question is, is based off the fact that it is proposed cost here, uh, what about the money source? Where, where the money can come from?
We would have to, ought to present to the council.
Yeah, that might change, yeah, according to what they're doing here.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the hour thing, yeah, so.
So is there a safe, separate, and that's what?
Yeah.
Minimum six, yeah, so a minimum of, what I've seen was a minimum of eight, twelve hours per week. And I think that was a fifty.
Fifty dollars per hour.
Per hour, and then, uh, the other sixty-eight hours was for twenty-five dollars per hour of benefits acquisition.
So that's where they can, or where they do anything, or they don't do anything?
Well.
Well, no, actually not, because it, the way it reads is, that's the proposed cost range is what it is, so that would be if we used them, visually if we had a.
It says here. There's no monthly fee to retain them. There's no monthly retainer fee. It's just as a service.
It says here, appropriate description, says.
To obtain health insurance.
Life Springs can provide a minimum of eight hours, and up to twelve hours, I don't know, per week onsite, so.
That's why we're putting off.
Yeah, I need that. So I don't want that word can, so I mean, I mean, will, or can, or.
Well, they said no, we can't.
Legal attorney deals.
Okay. Alright, so we'll put, have this back on the agenda in two weeks, right? Okay. What they've done. Play here a little bit.
The last thing we've got is, is that we just need to, this is for the cards you approved last time, that's just the actual.
I had the resolution at the time.
Bank wants that.
Bank wants that.
This was, hey.
This was for another one.
This was, this was last time.
This is one, uh, two, twenty-fourteen dollar charge that you obtained out of Bullock County, correct? Yeah.
You've already transferred the title.
Oh, okay.
It just wasn't, we didn't have that document last time.
A resolution promoting, promoting a transfer of the profit from Bullock County to, so, air movement to allow.
You've already moved on, you just need to sign.
Yeah, just need to sign, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, last thing, courthouse security, uh, the twenty-seventh, the council, I have a special session, please be there if you can, because it's, they don't want, you know the details, because when I went to the council meeting, they, they asked for the commissioner board to, you know what I'm saying, the last time, I said, well, I'm set up to be.
I've got it on your agenda, the ball, don't mind it.
That's next to.
So how's the, how's the resource officer doing?
Well, we've got, uh, three guys there, we've got, you know, some people that they hired, so we've got three people going to the academy in September. They'll be out by, by January, so hopefully, ready to.
So the three, the three that are in the jail, are, are still right now, they merit a deputy?
We've got Joe Baker, Darren Marshall, and Sean Mary in there right now. Now, that could change as time goes on, if somebody takes a day off, or something happens, you know. So we've, we're hiring some part-time deputies to help fill out the academy for us, so. And I think, probably, once we get these folks out of the academy, and we're sending some young people to school, resource, uh, officer school here in September, we've got a lot of things going on, getting some people trained, and getting ready to run, so.
Guess I do have something. Um, had an officer get hurt the other night, or a deputy get hurt?
Yeah.
Is there any way that you can, your department can communicate through this board, that when something like that happens, whether it's to the president of the board, or so that we're aware that there's been a county employee that's been injured?
Probably it's through Scott Dispatch, you know what I'm saying?
You mean immediately? Immediately it happens? Or you mean, John, hang on a minute.
Well, excuse me.
Why they had?
I will.
Look right for it, or I might help you back.
I'm asking because this incident happened Sunday night, and I had a taxpayer that I was talking to, uh, Monday night, and asked me, well, how's, how's Josh doing? Didn't know anything about it. Well, so I called him, and asked him, and he didn't, he said he just found out at five thirty. So I guess my question is, is that, you know, us being, you know, the board of commissioners that, you know, approves county payroll, approves, you know, insurance for people, that would it be a courtesy that we would know that there's an officer, or an officer, a deputy, or any county employee that's been injured? You know, just a courtesy call, a courtesy to, to one or the other?
Here's, here's, here's my answer to that. The one is, is, when I got around to it, I would think about doing that, but at the time this is going on, I got better things to do than to worry about calling you, telling somebody's hurt, I'm not trying to be smart, I look okay, and I don't care to let you know, I have just no big secret. But, you know, we've got a person, there's some privacy issues too, maybe he doesn't want people to know that, you see what I'm saying?
He's a killing employee.
Well, but he works for me, you know what I'm saying? I'm not sure that I even would have to tape, other than going through the, you know what I'm saying, and that's something Bob, you know what I'm saying, can tell me on, but, to be honest with you, I don't care to tell you, I don't care, who cares? But they've never been, well, why would I? Why would I think that I would be responsible for calling you and telling you that one of my guys got hurt? What, and seriously.
Because he's a county employee.
So, well, he works for me.
He works for us.
He works for me, he works for the sheriff's office.
County, I, we write the check to him.
Well, I'm telling you, it's none of your business what happened to him, okay? I can tell you that, if I were, if I were to do it in a private meeting, why would I tell the whole world what happens to an officer when there's a, a HIPAA violation that can happen? You're acting like I did something to try to hide something. It's not nothing. And no, if I have time, I may.
If you told me about, if you told me about his injuries and what's going on, that would've been a HIPAA.
No, I wanted to know that something happened. Okay. What I'm trying to tell you is, if I feel like it, I may. Okay? I'm not obligated to, I'm trying to tell you. John, yes, sir.
I'm just gonna say, is it possible to notify the auditor? She can notify.
What's the auditor got to do with it?
Because.
She is our soulmate for about everything, that's why.
Yeah, not being smart like Mike, but it seems like a logical solution.
No, it's, uh.
The president of this.
Yeah, I hung on for you, you hang on for me.
Wait a minute!
Well, go ahead, okay?
Got you.
Gentlemen.
He can't afford to call everybody, and if you're gonna get, you have to get to the council too. I mean, there's like ten people, he'd have to be making phone calls. One phone call to her, and she can let us know the next morning. We don't have to know that night.
That's about the most ridiculous thing.
Well, I think you're ridiculous one, they get in his business.
It, it's not his business.
It is his business. He runs the sheriff's office.
Okay. And I don't go in front of him and ask him questions, but he comes in front of us and asks us questions.
Go over the sheriff's office and ask him questions. You can do that.
Really?
Yes. I did it today.
I'm, all I'm asking for is a courtesy call to the board, or the commissioner, or the president of this board, when an officer's involved in a wreck, that's damaged company, or county property, or an officer, or an employee's hurt. All I ask. Well, they need to know HIPAA violation, don't need to know, uh, anything else. I just need, would like to know, uh, before someone comes to me and asks me, hey, how's so-and-so? That's all I ask.
I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you this, if, if I get around to doing that, I mean, more, if, if you were to ask me instead of accentuating that I was doing something to try to hide something, when you're supposed to ask me that, that's what this got off on their own.
No, it didn't. I didn't, I didn't accentuate that.
That's exactly what you did. You act like I was trying to hide something, like somebody getting hurt. You did, Mike. I guess you did. Everybody here says you did, except yourself, so go ahead and live in your own world.
I do live in my world.
I know you do, you just answered the question.
Because the rest of them are political.
That's, you know what I'm saying? That's, basically what I'm trying to tell you is this, when I can, I will let you know, which we did let Tammy know the next day because of the workman's comp. That's the normal protocol that we've been, I've never been asked by anybody to ever do that, so that's a new thing, I have no problem with that. If you wanna do that, I'll, like I said, if I get to it, but like I said, when I'm at the hospital, and I've got a guy that's convulsing, that's, that's doing things, you know, I'm sick of this, then, you know, the last thing I need to worry about is trying to call someone and tell them, it's like, I don't have time to call two people. That's the reason why I said Scott Dispatch can do it. If, if they wanna call and, and leave a message that so-and-so was hurt, that's fine. The next thing you ask me is tell them we got a hostage situation, you know what I'm saying, you can take a call and tell you the hostage situation because of that, that's where this stuff leads to. And I have no problem, but I have expectations to make sure that my employees' privacy is get, you know what I'm saying, what it needs to be. And I'm not trying to hide nothing, there's nothing hiding, nothing to it.
I didn't ask you if you were hiding it. I asked to be communicated with, so that's all I've got.
Alright, if you have anything else to add.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you all, and we will move on to the health department.
This is my, their contracts.
Alright, how are you tonight?
I'm good. Uh, you don't have coffee, it's plenty, I love some. Okay, there's a van. Kind of like in my coffee, they're not whole, there's a lot more. Um, so our, the best way to explain this is kind of like the cell phone, our system now is on three G, and so at the end of the year, um, all the products are gonna be going to four G, so if anything goes out, we have to upgrade it anyways after January first. Um, so we're having a little bit, not necessarily issues, but they've had to do some maintenance on it, and so they said.
Security.
At our. Yes. Um, for the entire building, so all six bays and.
Is that on service?
Someone else in the back door, and walk in, and it goes off?
Yes. We get the call.
I've never, there's a silent alarm?
It is.
I was gonna say, because it's never went off.
We go up there, and we don't have any way to get in.
I'll get you.
So, um, basically, like I said, they're gonna be aged out by the end of the year, so this would be to upgrade the equipment, and then if you look at the top of page three, um, that eighty-one dollar and thirty-six, eighty-one dollars and thirty-six cent charge, we don't have those right now, but I would like to ask for two of those.
Please, panic buttons. I have a first question, and the question is, is this the same company we're using now?
This is the same company that, uh, Dan Clay put in, whatever, there was, um, a, just right there.
Okay, so, uh.
Security.
Do you know, I guess where, I guess where I'm getting at is, everybody has a different security company, and I'd like to get to one security company, and if that can be, and I.
This is not the same, uh, we are with Mid-America ADS, they are with a different company, this building is separate, these two, I know, one time I provided John with quotes to do the video and security system over there, where that's at in process, John do.
But this is a totally different company.
This is to upgrade what we have now, to be, basically, after January first, where it's not gonna be compatible with their system. And I think the quote that Greg gave us was like fourteen to twenty thousand, if he can all kind of upgrade it.
And that's completely changed the system.
To change the system, um, we would go keyless, we would go, like some other upgrade like that too, and it would be the same system you guys have here at the courthouse.
So for fifteen hundred dollars roughly, fourteen would change, or upgrade to, to keep the same system?
Yeah, upgrade to keep the same system, basically just all new equipment, so that it's compatible with the LTE.
Well, I wonder why it's, I guess, the equipment?
Yeah, I mean, when did, when did that? Yeah, I mean, when did, when did that happen?
And I hate to keep looking at Greg, 'cause I know-
No, he didn't know, 'cause I don't know when he took our equipment back there.
The reason that, the reason that it would be, would be all of the same type of equipment here, it's all, it's a total gut and reinstall.
That's what I'm saying, it's all new equipment. This has got equipment, and we're just upgrading it.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
So I, if it was a cleaner fix, you know, I would rather be with one company, so that we all know, I mean, but I'd rather spend fifteen hundred dollars than fifteen thousand.
Hold on, just, I'm, I'm trying to figure this out, I, is it just your panic button, or?
So this is just gonna upgrade the equipment we have now.
And you have now?
So, think of it like a, like, we're on like an old cell phone tower, and at the end of the year, that cell phone tower's not gonna be supported anymore. So, we're coming across some issues now that maintenance kind of, is just putting a Band-Aid on. But they said after January first, they're not gonna be able to get the Band-Aids or the equipment anymore, because they're all going over to this LTE service.
I understand panic buttons weren't working very well anyway, is that correct?
We don't have any right now.
You don't have, that's why they don't work for equipment.
That's, I, yeah. And then everything, that's the only like new equipment that would be in this quote. Everything else is just upgraded to be on the new LTE system.
You went, Andrew's saying all those?
Uh, new, because, like I said, it's just the same people that are in there now, they're just replacing old equipment with new equipment.
So everything in this proposal is something you're, you're, you're good with?
Yes.
And this is just for the equipment upgrade, now this is, uh, not, uh, what's the, they're not gonna charge for this other?
Yeah, so right now we pay sixty-three dollars a month, and you see that our monthly service goes up to sixty-three, sixty-nine. That'd be basically a dollar. Um, they do have a-
We just can't do that.
We do have another option to, if we wanted to pay for the equipment upgrade over eighteen months, and have, instead of doing the fifteen hundred all upfront, we could do our monthly fee at seventy-seven dollars. I just think that fifteen hundred dollars really isn't something to drag out through eighteen months. I mean, but especially like technology, by the time it gets eighteen months, you're gonna be, you're gonna be-
A bit outdated again.
Right.
So, and you have money in place for your-
Well, that would be part two of this conversation, if you would-
Now the truth coming out.
So that would be, um, your guys' decision, 'cause I talked to Teresa about it. It'd be your decision if that would be a health department expense or building super expensive expense.
Being a male. So this is something you're running for now, it's ain't something you're gonna go to the council or ask for money?
So like, I have money in my budget to pay for it, but where I run off of the tax rate, like, how do I tell them?
Here, you guys have, um, the maintenance, the cust- the maintenance, uh, budget there, okay, this paper. All right, and there is a line here that's maintenance contracts. Company could speak better, you know, what, that's obligated for, for the whole year. We have something that's already appropriated, there's a line there, there's balance unexpended to date of twenty-nine thousand dollars. I don't know what you have to pay for the rest of the year. If there would be any money typically left over in that line?
Is that the encumbrance for maintenance?
Uh, no, this is maintenance contracts.
Maintenance contracts.
Yes, yes. And if you don't have a lot of obligation, or you're not, we could take, we could all, just pay it from there.
But if it's contract, so-
Right, you're paying it twice a year.
You're pretty close to whatever it's supposed to be anyway, so there may not be any fudge.
There may be about four thousand dollars, because it was twenty, not, it's twenty-one thousand he spent to date.
There's not, not too much fudge either.
There's not too much fudge in there. But we could always, if it got close at the end of the year, we could maybe transfer down from another line item into that line and finish out those contracts for the year.
So the question is, is you're one, and you have the money, he has the money, if you don't have the money, and, and where the money's gonna come from?
Right, so let me explain this, like Tony's budget, like he gets that money no matter what. If he doesn't spend it, it goes back to the general fund. So mine is like a running total, and so if I spend fifteen hundred dollars, and then after the year, I'm fifteen hundred dollars short, I don't get that. 'Cause I'm a tax rate, so I don't know what my, like, cash in the bank is gonna be. Right now it's maybe five thousand, but that basically covers salaries, but then I have all my utilities every month, maintenance contracts like this.
So what you're saying is, if we agree to this, it has to go to council to get approval?
No.
So we take it out of Tony's budget, contracts?
Sure.
But I would still finish sixty-four dollars a month for that would pay now.
A few states, you know, within a dollar.
Um, but I will point out, since we did talk about, we did hear, you guys have been talking about contracts. This, um, says in five years, she said that's kind of just like their initial term that all their contracts have. They can do a three-year, no problem. Um, and she said it's not noted in the contract, but a sixty-day notice, and they usually don't give any mess, fuss about canceling services, especially since we're paying for the equipment upfront. So, just so you guys know that.
Would it be possible if we pass this, make the budget next year, do the councils?
Well, I wouldn't pay-
No, this is a one-time.
Yeah, the fifteen hundred is a one-time thing to upgrade the equipment, and I pay for the sixty-four dollars.
It won't be if not purely, if that doesn't-
No, no, no. This is like a one-time fifteen hundred dollars fee, and I pay for the sixty-four dollars every month out of my budget.
So if we don't do it in January, are your, your alarm system gonna work?
Uh, there's a good chance not, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Do you, well, I don't wanna be the-
Be attorney?
The guy, yeah. Yeah. If it's not in the contract, it's not in the contract. So if she says sixty days?
Yeah, yeah.
Might as well be tattooed on somebody, well.
For sure. Yeah, and she said that, and she said she can't put it in the contract, but it's said with, um, all of their other clients that they've ever had, it's never been an issue to cancel.
We're in good shape until she quits tomorrow.
Yeah.
And we never had that conversation, it's not in the contract, we're staying.
I know, I know. And then what she said, she could do, she said the five years could be easily down to a three-year, if you guys don't wanna do five years, then five years is enough. And I know we wanna eventually get on all one system. If you wanna go the other option of trying to do a whole new security system that Greg did before the end of the year, that would be a conversation we'd have to have council.
And their budgets are down.
Uh, I forget, nineteen, yes.
So what you're saying is, is this is locking us in to-
Five years.
Five years.
She said do a three-year, she said that's no problem, they just automatically-
I understand that, but, you know, that's a long way from sixty days.
Oh, yeah.
And, 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 you know, we're bound by the contract for sixty, for three years, so I think, uh-
But that's, but that's at the sixty dollars.
Yeah, sixty-four dollars for a three-year.
Kind of Tony's taking his, or that's what I'm-
Tony, you would take a fifteen hundred dollar hit to pay for the equipment upgrades, and then I would be responsible for sixty-four dollars a month for the next three years.
And I'm all for all that, I don't, I'm for turn, people have enough to get in by the way.
How much did you say he spent?
Um, he spent twenty-one thousand roughly to date, or six months through the year. Out of fifty thousand appropriated, and so if you doubled that, which-
Let me ask you this question, what, so undoubtedly this fifty thousand's been appropriated, is that the same amount that was appropriated last year? And then, how much was spent out of last year, did you spend the full fifty thousand?
I didn't spend it all, no.
So if you doubled that to forty-two thousand, he's still got eight thousand left roughly. If you take, if he pays that maintenance contracts twice a year, he spent twenty-one thousand to date, we're already past six months. So I'm looking at him probably spending another twenty-one, he, he's got, um, you know, an eight thousand dollar maybe cushion, um, and you can see that his overall budget's still sitting at one fifty-two, unexpended.
If, if I'm, tell me if I'm wrong here, you would still have to go to the council and have a transfer?
No, no, he has money, he has all contracts.
This fifteen hundred dollar bill would be-
Paid out of his budget.
Paid out of Tony's budget.
Just like its maintenance.
Just like its maintenance.
Okay, sweet.
Uh, what are the five years, or two, or three years, but, but sixty dollars, or sixty-four dollars a month?
Have we, have we looked at that?
The only other security we looked at was the one that Greg got, which would put us all under the same security system that's here at the courthouse.
And I know those values are huge differences, but there's also a lot going into the difference of what, it's key files, it's full window break sensors on every window, it's door sensors.
From what, this-
That's what is kicking in the mouth.
That's just motion detectors and key pad, that's all.
That's what I'm asking. This, this plan that they have out there right now, what you would propose at the fourteen, fifteen mark, is a totally upgraded system?
With more bells and whistles, and more attention.
This is like Cs get degrees, like, that's gonna get the job done, but that's like A plus.
Why don't we do this, why don't we get a quote from Midwest to do that?
We have one, it's like, uh, between seventeen and twenty thousand.
How old is it?
They would offer it today. It was at four months old, five months, or?
Something like that.
And the next question is, where are we gonna find them at?
So it's, that would be a council, we have to bring council in. So, if you wanted to-
But we're locked in, if we do, if we do this, then we're locked in three years. And then we can't even upgrade till the other system comes along.
What is the, what is the, Marshall, sixty-four dollars a month?
Yeah, sixty-four dollars a month.
Yeah, what's a month, it's also, uh, uh-
It brings directly to the nine-one-one center, doesn't have a third person that calls us. So right now, their alarm goes off, it goes to their alarm company, and that alarm company calls us.
What, my quest, but my question-
I don't believe there is any, that's what you're paying for, is a monthly monitor.
Oh, okay.
You're paying thirty-three dollars to buy out a contract the first day. It's twenty-three hundred dollars, so.
So the transition monitoring is the, about the third-party company that's gonna call nine-one-one, Fred?
So, so you don't think it would be a monthly charge?
I don't believe so, I have to look at the contract again, I haven't looked at it.
We investigate that, look at that, you, we've got to a first a year, you're good to a first a year, correct?
Yeah, I mean-
Eh, what?
Well, this points out, this points out two things, not very much money involved. Secondly, she had an actual first a year.
Okay.
So the way they explain it to me, like, if it goes out, like, if it completely goes out, there's nothing they can do besides upgrade it, at this point. But if you want, I'm okay with, um, since you're talking about security next week anyways, I'm okay with, you know, if you wanna talk about it in the executive session, but then you want to prove it, so.
Well, like I said, fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred dollars fixes the problem, right?
Yes, it does.
Fixes the problem. Let's fix the problem.
And if we have to buy it out, it's twenty-three hundred, or twenty-three hundred dollars to buy it out for it.
So, did you make a petition to approve the contract, but with a three-year term?
Yes. And Greg still said they'll provide by that quote, I gotta see it, so.
Uh, most of the money, um, uh, to purchase this, up-
Upgrade it.
Upgrade equipment for fifteen hundred, and are you, are we going to use it out of the maintenance contracts for the, okay?
Yes.
For the maintenance contracts, which is gonna come out Tony's driving the call.
Okay, so if I get this revised to three years, it's up to you guys, are okay, for going and signing it, so they can get the equipment upgraded this week or so? Next week? Okay?
Second, John, I'll make it unanimous, and again, uh, yeah, you would, look into that, 'cause I think-
I like when you go, we don't sign.
Do you guys want me, Greg, to bring it up next meeting before, do you want that proposal to be a ballot for the-
Want you to submit it, yeah.
Email them?
Yeah, just get that signed. So Tammy, you got the, she's gonna sign that, take authorized or to sign that?
With the three year, instead of the five. All right. All possession, Michelle, yes, you sign.
All right, thank you.
All right. Billy, since we're ten minutes up, hey, I'm gonna come on up there.
Well, my understanding is, I'm just giving updates.
Yes. Well, and, 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 yeah, we talked about this, one of the things that I'd like to know is if we got any quotes on the flooring upstairs, and, uh-
I haven't got anything, Greg.
Okay.
I have something for you, also, Tony.
I do have a quote, John, and John has talked about this, uh, we need to do something with this. So, we do, yeah, there's two for certain, no, there's not, there's just one quote from this, this company.
Yeah, well, that's for like, the court now, the health department.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, and so.
But now one of those sheets also show without spraying any courtroom offices. And the other one shows the cost of adding that. You're going to use and sign that, and you already cracked upstairs? And you did, yeah. So what we're not getting, Mr. Perez, I think the sheriff, you and the other boy over at the jail now. So we have women over here, which I think is life of business. Yeah.
I guess I'm trying to figure out what I'm looking at here. Well, this area is for the courthouse common area, it's courtroom seating area, and-
And hallways and restrooms.
And what's the other?
Well, that's it, you're gonna leave that in the health department too. Yeah, we would like to bring them all out.
Yeah, that's, so what's the other two?
Courthouse common area, and the other one being the, uh- Well, one of these takes, this one I think takes care of the courtrooms, right? Right. One of them, another one takes care of the existing offices, yeah. Behind, so they won't be, I don't forgive me, I'm not trying to defend, but this is gonna be the hallways and the courtroom. Hallways and bathrooms, and for twenty-five restrooms, there's two, they're talking about both health departments, the old health department. Old health department, and we currently do the old health department now, anyway.
Why?
I'm not sure.
I don't think so. Nobody's asked to go in there, I don't think they spray it anymore.
So do not, I've been to the old part. I've been to the old quarters, being, uh-
We are the-
You pay for our bill, and then you-
You should pay that. We don't need to do that.
I paid for the oldest too.
We should not go to the older.
So, which, right.
I don't know how, do you let them in, 'cause I don't let them in.
No, I don't let them in.
So I don't think they go to the old part.
Well, I'm paying a bill, then we ain't getting, yeah, they always want to get in front of it.
So. Yeah, so at that point, I, one of these, you could probably, I don't know which one it is, there's one, probably there's one here, so you could probably just-
Well, there is two, 'cause that's exactly the same, except for the court, the offices.
You're talking about health? Yeah, that's probably the health department, and if it is, I'd probably, I'd probably terminate.
Yeah.
And terminate down, this is a regional, smaller, yeah.
So we can eliminate that.
Yeah, there's gonna need to do that.
That is, that is comparable, what is it already? Oh, yeah.
And they're all, well, I like that. I remember, we were low, you know.
Uh, well, I, you know, we just need to get them approved, and I can tell Mr. Perez, you know, I'm going out. I'm fine.
And who is this, Ben, your own son?
It's, uh, having Lemons terminate pest control.
So, why, call Lemons?
Yeah, that would come out of your book, if you want.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure it will. I'm sure it will, yeah, it does, it does.
Uh, is there any, is there any motion on this? I guess we will, because we are basically changing, right?
Right.
So, John makes a motion, Mike, you second, I'll make a unanimous. And, uh, and then when the, again, on the flooring, uh, we need to, uh-
I have, it was dropped off to me.
Okay, so we'll-
So there's that support.
Have something, and we might have that in before the council sets a budget for next year.
But you've got money proposed for their next cycle for twenty-twenty, you've got that fifty thousand that you almost talked about, um, in that twenty-twenty cycle, okay, for them to consider, but again, like you would like them to really show what you're, you're wanting to do with that, so.
So we're planning on taking the carpet up. Is that correct?
Well, I haven't, I haven't been on my, I haven't thought about that, but.
Tell me, the courtrooms?
Yeah. Yeah, you mean taking it up and doing away with it?
Right.
Yes, I think we want to do, I mean, my, that's my thoughts, is to take it up and probably do something more like than here, is-
But, but I'll take it up until we have a replacement.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
But what I'd like to see is, I know-
And I, I, I think that people take, the points comes in, not you.
Yeah.
You know, and, and, but as far as eliminating, let's put it like that, eliminating the carpet, You know, and, and, but as far as eliminating, let's put it like that, eliminating the carpet, I would probably be more favorable like this, uh, because I think it does two or three things. I think it makes it a healthier environment. I think it, I think it does away with the, with the pest problems that we're having at the house. And I think that's gonna help a bunch, and I think it lasts long. I think it's gonna be something that can be cleaned and...
The one thing that I'd like to see, and I, I think you're right, this type of flooring, but I'd, in the old courthouse courtroom, I'd still like to see the carpet there, because those people in offices over there are gonna have coronary, when you walk across that floor, it's, it's gonna, you're gonna hear everybody stepping up.
What's gonna happen with the hallway here?
Well, the hallway would be, to me, would be bad.
Wouldn't really be a nice thing.
Yeah, there's, there's not an office underneath there, so technically, but I think, even in Marsh's room, I think it's in the newer part, I think this floor probably work in there, but, but in, in the old courtroom, in the old floor, with it creaking and cracking, like every time you walk across it, these people down there will probably just go home, because they can't hear, so, but I, I'd like to see, I mean, I, I, maybe, maybe a floor contractor could tell us how you get, I can do this and that and the sound, I don't know, and put a pad underneath this stuff, so, but anyway, it was... Get some, get some...
Get somebody to tell them, say, how's that?
All right, yeah, we can do that.
I will.
Hold on a sec.
Uh, go ahead.
I'm gonna go back to the, when I'm again, we don't have anything on corrections. And Mr. Petz been going on corrections, done into?
Yes.
And here just thought, uh, if the boys in the jail, Jacob, can be surprised we're doing now or less, I'd like to have Jacob do the corrections. And he kind of split it up, we can do it about it. Well, that's, yeah. I mean, that can be done. Yeah, I know. I mean, we have, we have that in approach to it, not them.
Right.
And I, I just thought about too much, uh, maybe more, if we want to.
Tony, what about, what about the window? I think it's had trouble with the bar today. Did Josh make contact with, uh, with the suburban glass?
Um, corrections?
Uh, no, upstairs, upstairs, he did. Have they come down and looked at that?
They have not made it here yet.
And they are the ones that hooked a replacement windows in the other side, so they should have matched that and get that going, so, that's... And any, and while we're having them down here, I would suggest that we let them inspect the rest of these windows too.
True.
At that point.
We got one upstairs, you know, that this ashes running away.
Yeah, and at that point...
We need to do something about that, so...
Yeah, they're, they're, they did do the ones in the replacement side on the old building over there, and they matched them pretty good, so we'll make sure we get that down.
Right, right.
Uh, anything else?
As far as updates, I think Jerry told you pretty much what's going on over there. Uh, and that's all the updates I would have on any different building.
Well, I got a question.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a particular door in a particular room. I haven't been over there. Is that particular door on the, on the wall yet?
It's on the wall.
In the recorder's office, is that, have we found a door to, to...
Well, now, we, we have a door across the room in storage, that's one of these big old doors. So it'll have to be trimmed, and I don't know, she's hollering that she don't want to go.
But doesn't it have to be gla- is it glass?
No, it's, it's wood, like that. It has to have glass?
Has to have glass.
No, no.
Well, we...
I mean, those could probably be cut and glass fit, but, and we got a door over there, solid door.
I mean, we've been, no, it has to be a, it has to be a glass door, so she can see if somebody's standing there.
A full glass door.
Well, you know what's upstairs, like in the probation and in Josh?
Uh, you got, you know, we got this much wood on the bottom.
So no way kicks them, so kick plate pretty much. I mean, uh, I don't, I'm, this has been ongoing forever about this door, so, I mean, can we buy her a door and install it?
They could get her a door.
All right.
Put it up there.
Yeah.
I would take this, whatever's in the prosecution department, uh, prosecutor's office up there, just like that would work.
Yeah.
Oh, sure, I would take so.
I would think...
We talked about a, like a garage entry door where it's hacked last, but I don't think she was...
Yeah, but I think, I think we could look at probably...
But I think we can get a full...
And she presented what she wants, hadn't she?
That she have a...
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, she sent something that I, it's, I think it's just like the ones upstairs, but, I mean, if we can get that installed, so, we're talking about courthouse security, and I know that particular room, there's a lot of people go in and out of it, and they're happy, it's, it's, they shut this down like it's supposed to be, they, they've had to get up every time somebody walks through the hall and, and open the door, so we're trying to alleviate that for them and put a secondary protection for them, and if we do that, then I think we can alleviate that problem.
Problem, so. Yeah. Well, I can get the frame.
All right.
Somehow I managed to hold these in my files. They keep moving forward, and those are the generator. I don't know how I came by these, and I think somebody had me hold on to those in case they were needed, and that's the, uh, some generator, quote, experts' service on the generators.
I think these are, I think these were copies, but...
Okay, I'm gonna give them to you once.
Well, as far as updates, the jail, you know, it's coming, it's, it's moving on, they're in here, obviously, now. If, uh, for some reason Josh ended up full-time, well, let's get, I know his thoughts are there, would you have to have somebody else hire over here, up here? There were none. Okay, that's, that's an important question. Absolutely not. You can handle all that. Pretty sure, okay.
Well, if that's the case, then what, I mean, outside of the budget of moving his salary to the jail or the sheriff's budget, I mean, why, I mean, if he's there all time now, or not, ninety-five percent of the time?
You know, it's, sure the budget's there.
It just...
But to me, it's a matter of, or it's not, or... Right. Right, but, uh, you know, I mean, if there was a need for another person part-time, you know?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know what happened. Well, that's, that's the biggest concern I have. I don't mind having them over there, but I know it helps a lot, because then we have to turn on our somebody else here. Just pretty much there all day, every day, anyway, huh? Right now, yeah, they're like, oh, yeah. Okay. So, well, that's, I mean, what's been being done here, I've done it. Okay. So, well, I think it would be probably a bit a little more, you'd probably a few more of these.
Point to us sometime for, or that kind of stuff.
We do have a heat, uh, heat pump out up in Circuit Court, which, uh, we got an estimate on, it's about four thousand dollars. Now, we're removing all these heat pumps from over here at the jail. Now, there are several new ones in there, fairly new, you know, a year or two old, that I think we can replace that unit up there with. Instead of spending four thousand dollars, if we can get older than here, you know? I don't know what's gonna happen with it.
The same person probably gonna, if he's a workman, I don't know, it couldn't be the same. I mean, they, but anyway, I mean, they're not taking the equipment anyway, I mean, I'm, they're probably gonna dispose of it, I mean, so...
I would get rid of them new, you know, for sure.
Are they about, what, three or four years old at the most?
Well, I, maybe three, maybe.
Probably got another seven or eight.
I look how long these have been in here, you know?
I think that's a smart idea.
And there's one over there that's right, the right size.
That's even better.
Right, so.
Okay.
You know, it's been spending four thousand dollars, I'm, I'm just saying, can we not use those?
Why heck, yeah.
Although we'd have to pay for an installation.
Yep.
Because that unit is dead up there.
Well, actually, I mean, we got some storage at John Jones, if there's any of those units that are still, uh, we can store them, if we ever need one, we can replace them, so...
And you don't wanna keep any of them old?
Oh, no, we don't.
I mean, there's, Lord, you men in there, it's ninety-three.
Yeah, it's a boat, it's a cab.
Yeah. Yeah, but those now are just junk.
People, I don't understand that.
Uh, okay, so I want you, anything else on your part, then?
None, sir.
Thank you for coming in and working on that, finding out some of that flooring, quick and possible, if you don't care.
Okay, we'll get it.
Grant procedures, ordinance for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, and...
You've got a copy, um, there. This is, um, part, uh, answer back to the State Board of Accounts, um, needing, actually, it's like they, that big, stop time, that...
The one that says that, right?
Yes, that, that big large geriatric print.
Look at that. I'm looking all over for it.
Um, so, anyway, this is a proposal, and it's actually an ordinance that we have, um, council has already seen this. This is to, um, revise the ordinance that we have in place right now, uh, for grant, um, application procedures, and this was adopted originally back in two thousand twelve, and we've added more stringent requests from the departments to help with the, uh, schedule of expenditures from federal awards, they call the CFA, and we are under very stringent, because we do hit that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold, so we are under federal audit probably from now on unless a lot of our grants fall away. Um, so we have to have, um, more stringent controls, and this is the ordinance that outlines for the departments what they're supposed to do, and, um, both boards approve this, so this is part of our coming policy.
And I think, I think we need to, if it's up to date, and I think, uh, I'll make a motion to accept the ordinance.
And I have the original here.
Uh, Mary, I'll make a unanimous.
And if you all will sign, that one please.
I may have a chance to look at the minutes to July seventh meeting.
I'm good, I'm gonna make a motion to accept it.
I have a second. I'll make a unanimous on that.
Seven, I like it.
Failure, failure.
Stay.
Uh, payroll docket, ratification here, uh, again, uh, for...
August sixteenth.
August sixteenth, yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Oh, I'll make a unanimous. F M L A request.
There are three?
Uh...
Wow.
Yes.
I'm mystified why we look at those.
I don't really exactly, I kinda just go with it, but I believe there has to be executive approval of those, because you were informed, because they are on a, a list of absence. So I'm assuming that's the only reason why. Thank you.
Oh, that's fun. Uh, Mike makes a motion, I'll let you look at them here, I'll second the motion.
While we're talking about ordinance and stuff, I, I had a conversation with, uh, Bob Houston about our light duty, because, uh, I know back last year, I believe it was, we talked about light duty and, and, uh, I don't know, we, I know we, all three voted on something, and I thought we voted on an ordinance to, to create light duty for the highway department and for, uh, the sheriff's department, because I think the joke was made that everything else is light duty, so, uh, there wouldn't be anything that in some of those places that would even have, but I guess my, where I'm getting at is that, do we have a ordinance that is a light duty ordinance, if we have to pass an ordinance, and the second thing is, uh, if we do, are we adding that to our new handbook that we're printing?
I think that it is in the works to have, uh, a light duty policy in place, correct?
Well, um, according to, when I talked to Bob, he said we do have a policy. It was passed by this board only, but there's, with that, it was just a policy. There was, it was not written in ordinance form, and then I have, um, the human resources consultant said in that joint meeting back in February or January, whenever we had that joint session, over the handbook, that, that in order to add it to the handbook, it has to be in ordinance form, formally adopted by both commissioners and council. So that needs to be created, if you want to add that to the handbook policy, and then that will create a section in the handbook that addresses that, because the policy that I got a copy of late in the year last year, it just was for the sheriff's department only. It didn't go beyond that, um, so it doesn't extend to all, and I remember looking back through and researching, and whenever it was voted on, it passed two to one, because at the time, Jean Roberts was on the board, and she said she wasn't, um, in favor of adopting it for just one department, if we were gonna do it, it was gonna be all or none in her mind, so it did pass two to one at the time. So if you all are wanting to entertain that, then we need to look at getting an ordinance developed, and then take it before you, and then pass it to council.
I guess my question, I, I mean, sorry Bob, is, wh- why would the council be involved in an ordinance?
It's, well, they, they fund the county's operations. You all set a policy, and they agreed to fund it, and that's part of what he's saying, Kent Irwin, from Wagon Irwin and Sheenley, is that handbook is a combination of both boards. It is about the policies and the, um, appropriations to carry out those policies, so it has to be, um, adopted by both boards in order to be a valid handbook policy. Because you all might say, I wanna do something, but the council says, I'm not appropriating it, then we're gonna stay on my...
But there are, but the, but, uh, the light duty money, I mean, if, if someone's on light duty and they're being paid, then they're being paid anyway. There are, the money's already budgeted, and nothing would change, I mean, they would still come to work and be paid, and they're, and nobody's budget would, would change. So I don't know why the council would have, you know, I guess, say the way...
But vacation's the same way, it's budgeted, but vacation is funded by the council, so to speak, and a policy that you guys allowed for so much vacation time, so I'm looking at, just from his advice, because I'm, I'm not, um, you know, to his level as far as understanding all the, the things in county government, working on human resources, so I'm, I'm just going on his advice and what he said, um, and, you know, I, I'm just, I'm just repeating his trauma.
But, uh, so you think, I guess, the question is, do you think we should have a policy county-wide?
Well, I, I mean, I think it ought to include the highway department and, and, and the sheriff's department, to, those are, and here's the why, I mean, and, and we can include the whole county, I don't care, but I don't think how many times that someone in this courtroom is going to rent a courtroom, and this courthouse is going to, uh, be on a light duty situation, I mean, so, or, or, because, you know, whilst you're lifting, lowering, or, or, or not able to walk, I mean, uh, I mean, you can get in this building in a wheelchair, you can get in this building and do most activities. I don't, I don't have a problem with doing it for everyone, I mean, I'm just thinking that we need to have a, if it's an ordinance, then we need an ordinance, I mean, I think, uh, there's a couple of people that have used it in a positive way, uh, there's been an instance that it was used in, I consider a positive way, because a person, you know, surprisingly came back to work earlier, because they didn't like what they were doing, so, um, so I, I think it works, I mean, my company, uh, I'm, I'm mandated to, to, uh, have people on light duty, and not have them sitting at home doing nothing, uh, they make, I mean, there's several reasons why they do it, I mean, most of it is that, you know, people don't get cemetery, and, and, and in their, in their ways, and, and they're, they come back as a better employee, because, I mean, you sit home for six months or something, you're, you're not the same person when you come back from work, I mean, so...
That's, uh...
I think it's a positive.
I guess I, I agree, uh, partially, and the reason I say partially is because I've seen that work the other way too, and, and of course, you know, uh, I worked for, uh...
Yep.
Cold hold for, for years, and, uh, we've seen it both directions down there where they had light duty, and, and the problem that I see was, that we run into, was the fact that they was sent back to light duty, but maybe they was asked to do more than what light duty under that law, and then that's setting off to be hurt, uh, worse, and, uh, happened on a couple of occasions, and so I'm, I want, I want some parameters set if we do that, uh, and then what happens if, uh, I guess, if you don't have a light duty work?
To meet their requirements.
To meet the requirements, uh, I, what would we do then, if you, if you offer it to one department, don't offer it for all, so, I think there's some things that we probably need to have him look at, and Mr. Houston will, if you have to make sure that we're gonna be covering, the county's gonna be covering, uh, that there won't be, uh, lawsuits and things like that.
One of Mr. Irwin's biggest points of caution was that we can't make a new job up for somebody to just be able to return to work. That was one of his biggest cautions.
He and I had...
But I, I, I know, I agree with you, what you're saying, lots of times the people sit home for six months, you're exactly right, they, you know, uh, they don't come back, they...
Well, and that, actually, the other part is that you have some employees that wanna work.
Yes.
To, they wanna work and come and be, be a part and still, you know, draw their, their wages and everything else.
Healing element in the manager mountain.
But if we can, and, and how we do it, where I come from, is that, uh, the manager, whether it's Jill, Jerry, or... what they're going to do, at that point, that's all they can do, you know, they can't go out of that parameter of, hey, you know, today, I know I said you're going to do X, Y, Z, but I'm going to make you do Y, or something else, so, anyway.
One question here, and, and suppose of your position or where you're at down there, and we'll just do approve FMLA request right here, the, the FMLA procedure, is that, how, how, how does, how does that work down there? If you, and, and my argument has been, and I've lost this argument other times so far, but my argument has been that FMLA, if you, we, if you have paid time off.
You have to use it.
Uh, but you've got, you have to use it.
Yep.
Uh, but also, you are charged FMLA time at the same time, and, and it was always my understanding, is when it was, FMLA was enacted, was enacted, of course, under, under, under President Bill Clinton, and I think that it was done with said, if you've exhausted all your time, paid time, then you could be granted up to twelve weeks of time that you don't have to pay.
It's unpaid.
It's unpaid, but what we're, what, the way I'm understanding it now, is if you're going to miss more than three days of work, correct, you have to sign up, and we had, and to give you a, for instance, we had a person that broke a bone, there was no light duty work for him, they had plenty of PTO time, they had, they was forced to use their PTO time, plus the six, six week, plus six weeks of FMLA, and you are granted twelve weeks of FMLA in a calendar year, correct?
Twelve, yeah.
Well, no.
Twelve rolling months.
Twelve rolling months, so my point, my thought is, is you've got people that don't, that accrue their PTO time for such instances, but if something, you know, if, if something happens now, that they would have to be off to care for a, a, a sick person, or terminally ill person, or whatever, now they've only got six weeks left, and I, and I don't know if that's a federal law, or if that's how that's working.
It's a personal thing, you can take an FMLA for yourself, it, because it's your own personal injury, or if you can take additional FMLA if it's for caring for a loved one, those are two separate family medical leave services.
But twelve weeks is all you can undertake, right?
Twelve weeks is what you get for each incident, I think, and then it's in a rolling twelve months.
You have to come back.
You have to.
So you think it's for each incident?
But you, if I were injured and I took FMLA, I couldn't have another personal injury FMLA for twelve months, but if in three months, I need to take care of somebody that's, you know, come home from the hospital for three or four weeks, I can have my.
As a family.
As a family, yes.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding.
And then now your new handbook allows for forty hour people to retain up to eighty PTO hours, and your thirty-five hour people up to seventy now, so they do not have to exhaust on FMLA, yes, but they, it needs to run concurrent.
I'd just like, back to the original thing, I, I, if we're going to do that, I mean, I think we need to have an ordinance and, and get in the handbook before the handbook's printed, so.
I'm okay with that. Uh, a lot of it left here, but I've not talked, I've not been able to make contact with this gentleman, but Duke, a representative of Duke Energy has contacted me, and they are , what they're going to need, I think, is some right, or easement, whatever, utilities to allow them to run three phase electricity out Blue Road, I don't know how far that's going to go, I know there's three phase at, at the corner of Blue Road, I'm sure, because Tri-Hawk Air, but it's actually going to be past there, I think it's going to be grain bins and stuff out there, and I need, they probably need something to present, and, and at that point, we can act on, but just to let you know, that's probably going to be coming.
I did talk to, just, I know we touched on it the other day, about making an ordinance or talk about speed limits, county speed limits, talked to a lot of commissioners at my roundtable with them, and, and they said, oh, yeah, you can make an, you can make an ordinance, but you've got to post it, so you got, you do have to buy assignments if you're going to say our speed, the county's speed limit is X, Y, Z, then you have to post it, if, whatever you're doing on that road, it has to be posted, and if you make it countywide, it has to be on every county road, so, so, there is a cost to doing that, I guess, and I guess, safety, cost, enforcement, you know, or somebody going to sit out on a slab road and with a radar gun, I mean, I don't know.
Well, that, that was my understanding, even though, even though it's posted, because the state recognizes.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five, there is, there, I don't know if there was any enforcement to do.
We could, we could place a fee, but it, but then the problem would be, and I, and they didn't have the answer, but the problem would be, if you go in front of a court in Scott County, are they going to enforce your local law, or are they going to enforce the state statute?
And I think it's like, well, maybe that would count, attorney, please. I believe that's right.
I'd say that's the only way you can do is just somebody go, yeah, I'm going to go pay it, but if you want to say, I'm not going to go pay it, I don't know, you go after it.
Yeah.
And I, if everybody knew that, I wouldn't pay it either.
John, anything on your part?
No, sir.
What about you?
No, sir, except, I'm going to get y'all to sign your manuals, I got two sets for all of them.
Okay.
I guess we just acknowledge them, I'm going to show that my two just received a.
That actually came to the highway department.
It did? Okay, there's, well, look, you can't respond, so I don't.
Same with this.
Yeah, just, yeah, we each got a copy, I got like a copy, you can get a copy.
Yeah, but I don't even know what to do with that.
Yeah, so that was just, just basically for our knowledge here.
Okay.
Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, I'll remind you, at Tuesday at nine thirty a.m., it's the executive session with council, and we'll go for them, and that's all courthouse, it'll be, I think, yes.
Tuesday at nine a.m.?
Uh, nine thirty. Yeah, I need a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Second, make a unanimous.